My very beginning, I have a college degree. And she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." It's a... Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPs offers jobs with elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School. And now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance. The whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPs is you understand, is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective, you know? It's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
So I'm talking to kids all day. And that experience is really heartwarming. And while I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't, don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
My name is Fred Cook, and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murgy, and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPs. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it. And I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning? I have a college degree. And she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try." Because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPs offers jobs with elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School. And now I paint.
They're real good about finding people the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have Mesa Insurance. The whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPs is you understand, is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective, you know? It's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
So I'm talking to kids all day. And that experience is really heartwarming. And while I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day. And don't, don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
Having a quorum present, I call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. The board would like to welcome the audience and thanks you for attending. Viewers can watch TCAPs Board of Education meetings and committee meetings live via TCAPs YouTube livestream during the meeting or on demand at any time at the same address, or TCAPs.net/live. Please rise and join Mr. Plante's 4th grade class from Westwood Elementary in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we're at the review approval portion of the agenda. Any motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconds. All right, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. All right, motion carries. Moving on to recognition, to phone to Dr. Val Wagner.
Yes, okay, so this is a bit of an extension of our finance committee this month. So tonight, we have Tyson Birch, our Director of Transportation, and Kevin Chilcott, our Transportation Manager with us this evening to accept a recognition on behalf of our district mechanics. This year, the Michigan State Police inspected 84 of our school buses. And when they were inspected, they had zero findings of any issues with any of those buses. That is an amazing, amazing upkeep of our bus fleet that our kids are on each and every day. And they also inspected 20% of our licensed school bus operators' files and also had zero findings. So with this achievement, it is a great testament to our entire transportation team and their efforts. And again, just verbally, we had all of our folks come to our finance meeting. They were able to. But again, our manager, Kevin Chilcott, our mechanics, Dean Counselor, Steve Bridson, Robert Tice, Keith Springberg, and Luke Carlson, and our mechanic helper, John McManus. And again, they were recognized in May 2nd in person at Board Finance and received their certificates. And so again, just if Tyson and Kevin would stand up over there and just appreciate, and if we can give a round of applause. Yeah, if we can come up and get a picture. And if you'd, on behalf of the board, make sure to let them know again how much we appreciate all their efforts.
Thank you.
Yep, and as someone who's gone through multiple inspections, that is a really big achievement, especially on a fleet our size as well. Moving on to the next agenda item, public comment. The board has set aside this time for a public comment, and individuals addressing the board shall have one opportunity to speak and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system, and comments should be directed towards the board. We strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 0167.3. Stacy?
First speaker is Cynthia Dougal.
Good evening, my name is Cynthia Dougal. I live in Traverse City on 13th Street. And I came here with two issues about Thirby Field. One of them has been clarified. I have to go to the Michigan High School, whatever it is, Athletic Association about that. That was the fact that girls who play lacrosse don't have to wear helmets. But I do have one small thing about Thirby Field. There's a wonderful, they're wonderful neighbors, and I love to watch kids play. I used to be a school administrator and a teacher. And now I can watch without any responsibility or any need to take care of anything. You just sit and watch and have fun. One little thing which would be very nice, certainly for the neighbors and possibly for more people, if you had it posted somewhere, the whole Thirby calendar, what goes on there? When I see a bunch of cars suddenly arrive, I thought, "Well, it's not Friday night. What is going on?" And sometimes someone tells you, and sometimes they don't. And sometimes you see when you watch what it is, but sometimes you don't. And it would be very nice if that were somewhere on your website. That's all I have now. Thank you very much. Oh, but by the way, Thirby's a great neighbor. It's really fun. You know, they're very, the consideration is good. Every once in a while, they forget to turn the lights off at night, but that's all. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Susannah Tobin.
Hi, Susannah Tobin, 502 Fifth Street. I am here tonight. Some of the students who are supporting the sustainability resolution, who actually have been working pretty hard to get this into a discussion with you are very appreciative that you have it on tonight's agenda. I'm thanking you on their behalf. They have tennis meets and track meets and aren't able to be here personally, but I am. So thank you for putting this as a discussion item tonight. I will once again reiterate that investing in equipment that runs on electricity instead of gas is a win-win. It not only reduces operational costs for TCAPs, but it also reduces the operational emissions that come from greenhouse gas. So I think that the future is now, and we have less than six years to cut our emissions in half. So let's, let's do this. Thank you.
Next speaker is Joy Landis.
Hi, I'm Joy Landis, and I live in the Bertha Voss neighborhood. And Bertha Voss has been a terrific part of the neighborhood for decades. So I would like to comment about what I and many of my neighbors would like to see in that property as it's developed at the former elementary school. In general, being outside, talking with our neighbors along the street, enjoying the sights and sounds of nature are what makes our neighborhood feel like home. Many people live there. To be more specific, we need a new owner that doesn't significantly increase traffic or has limited times of the day when it does increase traffic. Dock Road and Shore Road are the only means to depart to and from our homes in Peaceful Valley and Deepwater Point. So safe flow of the traffic into and out of the neighborhood means a lot. We have many people, including children and dog walkers, walkers, runners, bikers. We love to use our roads, and we don't have sidewalks or very little shoulder. So traffic flow matters. And we also have a nature preserve, access to open water, and wetlands, and an eagle's nest. And we want those respected and not negatively impacted by a new owner. So this would include like lighting that doesn't contribute to light pollution. I think I've heard that a church is interested in purchasing the property. But not a lot has been shared about what activities or buildings that they want to have. So it could be a great fit, I don't know. The existing Catholic Church is a good neighbor. So thank you for listening. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Woody Smith.
Good evening, my name is Woody Smith. I am a Traverse City resident and a business owner and a homeowner in Traverse City. So two quick things. First of all, I would like to say how excited I am that the yes committee is underway and in support of the bond vote. It's gonna be happening this summer. Could not be more excited personally to cast a yes vote. And I encourage everybody who's here tonight to spread the word about just how thoughtful this board and the administration have been in thinking about the investments we need in our facilities to take us to the next level. I also wanted to speak in favor of the resolution that you're considering tonight, the sustainability resolution. I wanted to thank the students of the West High School and Central High School environmental clubs who put that language together and put it forward. I think it's the smart thing to do for so many reasons, given the moment we're in and given the need to reduce our emissions and, as Susannah Tobin spoke to, bring down operational costs at the same time. So thanks so much, and I appreciate all of you for being willing to serve on behalf of our community. It's nice to, nice to see you.
Next speaker is Scott Richards.
Scott Richards from Green Lake Township. I'd like to speak on this story about Jordan Demay. Jordan Demay, D-E-M-A-Y, of Marquette, Michigan. I would like you all to look up that story. Second of all, these books, Red, White, and Royal Blue, and Gender Queer, and All Boys Aren't Blue, should not be in the public school system. It's pornography. And if you don't believe me, I got copies in my... And if you don't believe me, I got copies in my briefcase over there. You should be teaching these kids what the Holy Word of God says, that they're fearfully and wonderfully made, that they're made in God's image, and they have beautiful talents and abilities to show people God in them. Thank you.
Next speaker is Margie Rich.
Hi, my name is Margie Rich. I am a Traverse City resident and had three of my children go through the TCAPS schools. I'm also the director of Generations Ahead, which is a small nonprofit in our region that serves teen parents, both teen moms and teen dads. And I'm here tonight to commend you and thank you for considering the resolution in support of May being Teen Pregnancy Awareness Month. Over the past five years, there were one hundred and sixty-three births to teen parents in the three counties that TCAPS serves, Grand Traverse, Lelandau, and Benzy Counties. These one hundred and sixty-three births impact the lives of not just the moms, but the fathers, and also, of course, the babies that are born to them. Teen parents face unique and complicated challenges as they navigate the journey of parenthood while still in adolescence. They are at an increased risk for numerous detrimental outcomes. Teen moms who get pregnant while in our schools face a fifty percent chance of not graduating by the age of twenty-two. Teen fathers have a thirty percent lower chance of graduating than their peers. Teen parents are more likely to live in poverty, have poorer health outcomes for themselves and their babies. Many teen parents face mental health issues, including depression and severe anxiety. We see this every day among our clients. The babies of our teen parents also face significant issues that should be a concern to everyone in our community, including those starting kindergarten at a very early, at a deficit compared to their peers. At Generations Ahead, we believe that empowering young parents when they are still teens helps them overcome these obstacles. With guidance and a supportive community like ours, these young parents will become more resilient and be able to lead thriving, independent lives. Thank you for your ongoing commitment as the TCAPS board and the school district to serving all students in our community, no matter what their needs and situations may be. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sarah Payette.
My name is Sarah Payette, I'm a resident of Traverse City, excuse me, and I'm the program director for Generations Ahead. So Margie mentioned that our mission is really to empower parents and build resilience. Just wanted to tell you in a minute or two how we do that. We serve parents under the age of twenty-two. We serve about forty parents in a given year and their families. And we do that once they enroll by just offering them different programs and services. They can engage in all of them, or just one, or some of them. It can change in their time with Generations Ahead. We have a baby pantry with very lovely, new, and gently-used baby equipment and things related to maternity. We have a case manager on staff. She works directly with clients, supporting them. Could be with education, transportation, employment, childcare, housing for sure. We also have a mentoring program in which we pair our clients with members of our community that have been trained that want to support them. Could be something very specific, like entrance into college, just walking alongside and teaching how to parent. Or it could be just broad, they just would like an adult friend that is a good role model for them. We also have an internship program in which we provide our clients with about sixty paid hours of internship work. The hope with that is that they can either return to their education, expand their education, or join a trade, but have a vision for a future career. And then we have social groups. Some of these are with children in the community. Some are a playgroup, and then others are, we provide childcare dinner while parents get together, and they connect and just really validate each other. So that is Generations Ahead in a little recap. Thank you.
Next speaker is Laura Flynn.
Hi, everyone, Lauren Flynn, Traverse City resident. I'm also a Grand Traverse County Commissioner, but I'm here tonight as a very proud member of the board of Generations Ahead. I was not a teen parent, but I was a young parent. So the services that Generations Ahead provides our young parents, our teen parents, would have been life-changing for me as a young parent. I'm also here tonight to also thank TCAPS for their continued partnerships with Generations Ahead. Allowing GA to have our offices, our baby pantry, and our new childcare center with NMCAA right there at Traverse City High School has helped our teen parents and our clients to continue to finish their education while they get the crucial support they need to be resilient and successful in their parenthood journey. Generations Ahead would not be the organization it is today without the partnership with TCAPS and the continued contributions of our community. So I thank you very much for considering this resolution for Teen Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Month.
Next speaker is Jacob Romain.
Hi, my name is Jacob Romain. I would first off just like to thank you guys. I'm a Traverse City Central student, I'm a junior, and I work with the C Club here, and we are incredibly grateful that we have the sustainability resolution, you know, in your guys' minds and on the board and on the table. I'm just here to show my support for that. And as Susannah said earlier, many students cannot make it. So I'd like to speak for them too. Many of us here at Central and West do support a brighter future, a greener future, with less carbon dioxide emissions and safer climate. Thank you.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Dell.
Hello, whoops. I'm Elizabeth Dell, 117 East 10th Street. And I am also here to speak about the resolution for Clean Energy and Sustainability Goals. I spoke in support a couple months ago, and so I'm glad to see that you're still considering this. I really appreciate your commitment to our school district and to making a better place for our students. And I think you're all here because you care about the youth of our community. I care about my son and his generation. And so that's why I think that this resolution is important. It shows leadership in creating a better world for our young people, a safer world with a more stable environment. We, individually, we can make an impact on climate change, but there's much greater impact if we're working collectively, if we're taking action at the local, state, and federal level on solutions. And that's why I think this resolution is really important. Traverse City Light and Power is really leading the way and working hard to create more, to grow their portfolio of clean energy. And so the more clean energy that we have available to use in our community, the more important it is for us to electrify our buildings and equipment so that we can be using that cleaner energy as opposed to natural gas. This will reduce pollution in the air, which has a lot of health benefits, immediate health benefits. And it will be a cost saver, because this is the direction that the world is moving in, and we can save money with these new kinds of technology, with affordable clean, that are using affordable clean energy. So I want to thank you again for considering this and for the, I want to thank the students for their hard work on making this happen. Thanks.
Next speaker is Bob Nichols.
Hi, my name's Bob Nichols, I live at 426 Fifth Street. I'm also here in support of the sustainability resolution. We have a bond proposal coming out this summer. I think it's a great opportunity as we replace old equipment with cleaner equipment, clean energy equipment. It's good for the planet, and it's good for the health of the kids. I think that, we know that there are electric buses in Cadillac and Pellston. I think there's an opportunity probably here. There are funds available from the feds through the IRA. I think that's probably something that we could investigate and just move towards a cleaner environment for sure. And I appreciate you guys looking at this and bringing this up. I think it shows the kids you care about them to move forward with this. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tim Galante.
Hi, thank you for all you do. My name's Tim Galante, I live on Deepwater Point, down the street from Bertha Voss. And that property is near and dear to our whole community down on Deepwater Point. And I wanted to essentially just come forward and share what has been said in letters and emails from folks in the neighborhood that are very concerned with the whole notion of you selling the property. Candidly, it was donated by our neighborhood, by our town, to be a school. We rooted for you when you transformed the school into other versions of schools. We really love that property for that reason, or as a park. And the notion of it being sold to somebody that they can develop it is, it's disappointing. I would say that for sure. Perhaps you do have the legal right to do that, but for me, morally, ethically, it's wrong. It was donated property, give it back. All I can say is that we would hope that if you have to sell it, that you're including us actively in the process, because we are going to be impacted based upon that sale. And I appreciate you thinking about this, and I appreciate the inclusivity of this whole event. So thank you very much for all you do.
Next speaker is Bill Weisner.
Bill Weisner, Traverse City. And I'd like to speak on this Martin Luther King handout, his quotes, and excerpts from his Letter from a Birmingham Jail. And the topic would be, he spoke, contrary to probably a lot of people's beliefs right now, he spoke against all sexual sin, including homosexuality. So many think it's a civil right and that the younger generation, this is their civil rights movement, to protect and promote LGBTQ. Not so according to Martin Luther King. And you can check out on my first flyer at tcfamily.org. It has a flyer, has a lot about Martin Luther King and his quotes from a letter to Ebony Magazine way back in nineteen fifty-eight, I think. So here's some of the quotes, and I'll email this to you guys. I didn't get here earlier enough to give you a copy, but I'll email it to you when I get home, and I'll leave this copy with the secretary so she can put it in the record. Here's one, he says, how, and from the jail, he said, "How does one determine whether a law is just or unjust? A just law is a man-made code that squares with the moral law or the law of God." And an unjust law is a human law that is not rooted in the eternal law and natural law. And also, he says, "One has the immoral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." These laws are unjust. We should be speaking out about that. Here's another quote he has. "I am coming to feel that the people of ill will have used time much more effectively than the people of goodwill. We will have to repent in this generation, not merely for the vitriolic words and actions of the bad people," which was very bad, what happened to one race of people in the civil rights movement. That was people, not behavior. He goes on and says, "But for the appalling silence of the good people." I would say the good people are speaking out the truth on this. If it squares with God's law, if it squares with natural law, that's what we should be speaking about. This part on the bottom is a call of a watchman in Ezekiel, the Bible, chapter three, verses sixteen to twenty-one. "We are called on to speak the truth when we see it, not be silent." And the excerpts on the back are all concerning the words "laws, just, and unjust." And we have two religions now, evolution and LGBTQ. Has replaced the biblical viewpoint, so it's still a religious belief. So I've got these to hand out, I've got thirty-five of those and quite a few copies.
Thank you, Mr. Weisner, your time's up.
Thank you very much.
And the next speaker is Ella Kirkwood.
Hi, I'm here speaking in support of the sustainability resolution. Thank you guys so much for putting this on your agenda, it's super exciting to see. I'm just really excited about the possibilities, and I think that implementing this resolution could really help save a lot of money in the long run, because electricity and electrified appliances need a lot fewer repairs, and they just generally last longer. And also, you could be helping save the environment along the way. So thank you guys so much for considering this resolution, and we're excited to be speaking with you today. Thank you.
That's the end of public comment.
Okay. All right, thanks for the public comment. And moving on to superintendent's report, deferring to Dr. Val Wagner.
Yes, so start with legislative update. We have both the chambers of the legislature at the state level, the House and Senate, have moved their education bills forward. And there are quite a vast differences. To give you an idea of the number one vast difference is, the state has recognized that in our retirement system, there are two pots. There's a healthcare pot, and then there's a pension pot. And both have been, for quite a few years, have been underfunded. And so because of that, we've had to pay and kind of have the burden on the backs of our district of having, of every payroll dollar, we have to send twenty-two to twenty-seven percent of that back to the state to cover those legacy costs. Well, interestingly enough, we've learned that the Attorney General's given an opinion that those are technically two separate pots. And the healthcare pot has now reached full of funding at a hundred and three percent of what that is. The retirement part has not, but the healthcare part has. And so because of that, the state has learned they no longer have to have six hundred million dollars put into that healthcare pot. So the question now is, is what are they going to do with that six hundred million dollars? The governor has had her ideas, which includes full preschool, universal for anybody, as well as free community college for any Michigan graduate. The legislature has, in the, the House, or I'm sorry, the Senate, has somewhat agreed with that, not quite. They spent all of the money, but in some different ways, and only raising the threshold for income level for preschool and doing some things with the Michigan Competitive Scholarship, some additions. But the Senate did, or the House did an interesting thing, and they actually brought down the unfunded liability payment we have to make to eighteen percent. And the reality is, is they could drop it all the way to thirteen point nine percent. And so there's real talk still that a lot of the education groups are really lobbying hard to get that drop closer to the thirteen point nine. To give you an idea, for our district, just the retirement difference, if we were at thirteen point nine, is four million dollars a year. So it is very significant where they decide to go with this decision. So lots of conversations with that. But all the three of the chambers are within probably twenty to thirty dollars right now on the foundation grant, right around, the median, I think, is two twenty-five per student. But it's peanuts compared to that unfunded liability payment that we would have. So going to be interesting where we're going with that. We're talking with our legislative delegation here about the realities of that. We have real concerns about the preschool expansion, because A, we don't think we can ramp up that fast to find certified staff to be able to do it. And second of all, we've had a seventh GSRP classroom open here that we did not fill this past year. So we know that, we think unfortunately, if they did this, it's just going to, A, we can't find staff for it, and B, we don't have enough kids even for it, for what. find staff for it, and B, we don't have enough kids even for it, for what in our region of the max we already have. So, we're really hoping to see at least quite a bit of that unfunded liability paid down. And that becomes permanent, too. The more that gets paid down in that legacy, eventually, you could see a point where that part is zero that we pay, once the retirement part is also fully funded. So, we're really sitting, kind of figuring where that is. They will name conference committee members, we think, next week. And they'll work, May revenue consensus is this coming Friday, which is really when the state tells us what money they think they have, for sure. Rumor is, they think that it's a little bit better than they thought. And so, we'll see on Friday and we'll keep you updated. But that's gonna be the hard thing of this next budget. I just talked about a $4 million swing for our district, you know, and that could be zero to four million and all the other things in there combined. So, we'll keep you updated and we're gonna have to give just a best conservative guess right now on what that is when we go and adopt our budget for July because we're mandated by July 1 to have one in place. And so, that means we have to do that at our June board meeting and we probably will not have the answer to this at that point. So, that's legislatively. Then district highlights are TCAP's annual comprehensive financial report has again achieved the certificate of excellence in financial reporting now for the 19th consecutive year. This annual report represents the district's continued commitment to high-quality financial reporting and transparency, and the award recognizes that work. So, kudos to all of our team, Works Finance across the district, on making sure that we have that next level of view of our audit and that element. And again, for the 19th year, have come with those flying colors. TCAP continues our tradition for veterans to receive high school diploma. TCAP is pleased to continue the opportunity for veterans to receive a diploma. Under Public Act 181 of 2001 and Public Act 55 of 2014, the Board of the Michigan, of a Michigan school district can award high school diplomas to World War II, Korean Conflict, and Vietnam-era veterans in recognition of their service and sacrifice. This law permits World War II veterans who left high school between December 16, 1940 and December 31, 1946, for immediate military service and not subsequently receive a high school degree to now apply for a diploma. Korean War veterans who left high school between June 27, 1950 and January 31, 1955 may also apply. Veterans of the Vietnam era must have been drafted or enlisted between February 28, 1961 and May 7, 1975 to qualify for this diploma. Family members may apply on behalf of a living or deceased veteran. For more information, please contact Erica Swartz and the TCAP's Human Resources Office. Some important days coming up. On May 16 at 4 o'clock, we will have our reschedule of the West Athletic Field Ribbon Cutting. So, it's cloudy right now, no rain, open. On May 27, we do have no school on that day for Memorial Day. May 23, we have our Music Boosters Concert at Central High School. May 31 is the Traverse City High School graduation. June 2, the West and Central High School graduation. And then on June 7, we have our last day of school. You can check the District of Building calendars to see all the end-of-year music and sporting events, as we have too many to mention, along with award ceremonies and all the awesome things we have for our seniors. Also want to mention, congratulations to our transportation manager, Molly Steemo, for meeting the requirements to obtain a certified transportation director certification under the Michigan School Business Officials voluntary certification program. And then also, Jennifer Lane has successfully completed her probation period with TCAP and is now eligible for tenure, effective August 6, 2024. So, that is what I have for my update.
All right. Questions? Okay. Moving on to board committee reports. First out, Board Curriculum Committee, reporting out by Erica Moonmore.
So, we had our curriculum meeting April 30. There were no public comments. We moved right into procedural items, the no changes to the draft meeting minutes. So, those remain as posted. We then went into any changes for the 23-24 district course catalog. There were no changes. Then we went into a field trip request. This has been moved to the consent calendar tonight, but it is a West Senior High School, 10th grade, advanced art and photojournalism students to go to Peru. Again, this is in the year 2026. So, they are getting a jump on obviously the fundraising for these kids. Again, that's moved to the consent calendar. Then informational items. So, the first item, we had our rescheduled AI, artificial intelligence, learning series. So, Evan Obronovic and who's the Executive Director of Technology and Danielle Brostrom, who's the Education Technology Coach, gave a great overview of AI and how we use AI within TCAP. So, currently at TCAP, elementary students cannot use most of the AI tools on their own due to privacy concerns, but should have exposure to AI-produced work. Secondary students have access to AI tools and are encouraged to transparently use AI under the guidance discretion of their teacher. And staff are encouraged to use AI tools with transparency where it makes sense. So, the technology department has created a draft. It's called the AI Guidance for TCAP. Obviously, we've not had this before, so important to kind of get a guidance for TCAP. And this has been shared with principals to review with teachers and comment on before the summer break for a fall implementation. And again, this includes tools that our students, teachers, and staff are currently using. Something interesting Evan brought up with regards to AI is this 80-20 rule. So, 80% of AI and 20% of that human powered to finish. So, is sort of where the direction is going. So, that was interesting. We also had English Language Arts K-5 curriculum adoption updates. Ms. George Jones Morgan had shared with us previously, I reported out on curriculum, but they actually, there was a mistake by the MDE. So, just take note that the original grant amount was like 2.7 million, which was sort of unheard of. And the correction, the actual amount of the grant is 1.6 million. So, not really sure why that mistake was out there. This still covers the curriculum, to purchase the curriculum, but it will limit some of those extras that everyone got kind of excited about. So, again, they're in the final stages here of making that recommendation. It'll be shared with the curriculum committee at the May 28 meeting and then approved hopefully at the June 10 board meeting. And then we had lots of celebrations and successes. I will kind of go through these quickly. The principal instruction team had the full AI presentation as well. East Middle School, the debate club was highlighted. There were lots of high school senior exit interviews taking place at Central High School and West Senior High. Beth was a part of it. I was a part of it. I think Josie was there as well as volunteer. So, got to interview a lot of great students. I see a bunch of kids out there in the audience that possibly participated. Mr. Kay, who's the principal over at Traverse Heights, he got some love from students and staff. So, that was shared. Our first robotics team, they did not make the elimination round, but performed the best that they've ever done. So, that was a real highlight for our robotics team. Our K-5 principals, Kurt Rainey and Kate Berwinkle, presented at our study session, which we were there for. So, just a shout out on what a fantastic job they did looking at that K-5 curriculum. We talked about the solar eclipse and that every TCAP students, every TCAP student got glasses to enjoy the eclipse, which was a pretty cool task for over 9,000 students. So, thank you to TCAP. We also highlighted the Traverse City Central Photo Voice Project. So, this is where our Central High School art students were, shared some of their pieces of art, of reflections. So, that was, we talked about a few of those. We had a lot of Earth Day celebrations across the district. East Middle School was really great about celebrating their bus drivers, brought them all snacks and just thanked them. And then, of course, our administrative assistants were also celebrated for Administrative Assistance Day. So, those were our celebrations. Our next board meeting, I think I already said, but is Tuesday, May 28. And we will be at the new Glen Loomis building, administration at Glen Loomis. This is the actual last meeting here in the Boardman Building. So, I asked Janie if she wanted to come just as a...
From a...
Yeah, exactly.
She declined, I'm sure.
She said, "Take it all in for me." Any questions?
Questions? All right, thanks. Moving on to Board Finance and Operations Committee, May 2, reporting out by Andrew Raymond.
All right, the Board Finance and Operations Committee met on May 2 at 8:15 here in Boardman. First, thank you to trustees Moonmore and PACT for filling in for trustee Byrne and myself. And thank you to trustee Ballinger for chairing the committee. We, or I guess they, kept the prior meeting committee minutes as posted, so no changes to that. There were a few purchases that are on this evening's consent calendar. The first one is for information technology related to technology and security systems at the new Innovation and Manufacturing Centers at Central and West High Schools. This purchase is for an amount not to exceed $608,677. That does include a 10% contingency and is funded from capital bond funds. The next purchase item is for a facility vehicle that was in an accident and was totaled by the insurance company. So, the replacement for this is from Lundheimer Ford for a total amount not to exceed $45,724. That does include a 10% contingency funded from the insurance proceeds and general fund. Again, both of those are on the consent calendar this evening. And then, as was mentioned earlier, recognition for the transportation team for their 100% passing rating on their annual school bus safety. So, thank you to those individuals at the transportation team. Then they moved on to their capital project update that we do every month, making good progress. I believe the bus wash station is basically completed. And then the Information and Manufacturing Centers at both West and Central, making good progress there as well. And then they moved on to the certificate of excellence that Dr. Van Wagner mentioned in this evening's, his report out this evening. Again, I think should not go just unnoticed that, you know, all the hard work that goes into that 19 consecutive years is pretty incredible. So, congratulations to Associate Superintendent Thomas Hill, Wes, Sandy, I'm sure everybody else that had a hand in that, congratulations to them. Then another recognition for the Food Service Group. So, they also had a comprehensive review of the district's school nutrition program and there were no findings in that review as well. So, congratulations to them. Let's see, no other items were discussed. They adjourned at 8:49. And our next meeting is May 30 at 8:15 at, again, the new Glen Loomis.
Any questions? I will cover the executive committee reporting out. We did have, we talked about the sustainability resolution. I did put it to full discussion because, quite frankly, I know there's all sorts of things to discuss, but we can only do it in an open meeting, so it'd be good to have that discussion later. We have a recognition for and appreciation for the district retirees' resolution, which we'll be talking about also. And got some staffing updates. We are starting to see some retirements go up to more normal levels, still not as elevated as potentially they could be, but they, we currently have 35 retirees, 17 of which are teachers. We also have a few resignations and leaves of absence as well. So, we're looking in reasonable position at this point. We have a lot of a good candidate pool, but definitely a busier summer for HR, for sure. With that note, we do have policy updates. Everyone should receive the 3,000 sections for policies. It is really important for you to go through those as board members and try and get any issues that we have down with those one-on-one meetings with Connie so we can try and get those ironed out to make the board approval process smooth as possible because that is gonna be here before we know it and I don't want to seem, that seem overwhelming. Moving on to communications update, there is now bond communication starting. There is a yes committee, which is not associated with the board that we heard from earlier today, but we have got some just straight up informational publications out as well. The Sunshine Bus Summer Schedule, which was awesome last year, it's gonna be running an additional week, June 12 through August 31. No service July 1 through the 5th, but it'll be making a number of stops in the Traverse City area, which are posted and amazing support for our community. May 6 through 10, last week was staff appreciation. So, thanks to everyone who works at TCAP in any position and hopefully it was a good week. The weather was certainly pretty decent, which is always a positive and getting closer to summer. The May, and we said the May 7 ribbon cutting was canceled and good call on that because we were there later and it looked quite wet. So, that will be, and what was the rescheduled date, May?
The Thursday.
Thank you. Yep, so May 16 is the rescheduled day. Other than that, that was our last executive committee meeting at this building and we will also be having our next executive committee meeting, May 30, 3 p.m. at Glen Loomis. Any questions? Next report out, Superintendent Board of Education Student Advisory Committee, reporting out by Beth Back.
Here, I'm gonna defer heavily to Dr. Van Wagner because I was caught in traffic around Central. Took me 40 minutes to get from my house in normally a 15-minute ride. We did talk somewhat about AI. I caught that discussion and what makes an excellent teacher. And hearing comments from the students was very useful.
Also talked a lot about different instructional methods, talking about project-based learning, looking at even, you know, ways in which school credits might be able to be earned outside of the classroom, some digital badging that we're seeing different schools are doing where students are able to actually sometimes build their own elective courses and be able to put them into a portfolio. So, got their feedback on what that might look like, their thoughts on that. And definitely, we, Stacy, yesterday or today, shared with the board all the notes from all of our student superintendent board advisory council meetings. So, if you want to get a sense of what the students said, they're there for you for the year. We had our last one. We thanked our seniors and we'll be going out and looking for some more representatives next fall as we start the school year. And definitely gives great insight. I know all the board members that have the chance to do that really appreciated those opportunities and look forward to continuing that on next year.
And I think the students enjoyed it as well.
Awesome. I certainly liked attending as a board representative, so hopefully everyone gets that opportunity. Board Office Hours, reporting out for the April from Holly Bird.
Yes, I was at the Horizon Bookstore, second floor, 6 o'clock. We had about four or five people show up and we talked a little bit about MLK Day coming up and some concerns around the new programming and what that meant. And I assured them that the new half-day programming allowed students time to get some real learning and celebration in rather than a regular class schedule that they might anticipate having that day off instead. Now, they're gonna learn a little bit about what that day means. We talked a little bit about the digital promise and what that was and how that was going. We talked about the Mandugunan Indigenous curriculum and several people came and expressed support for that. We talked about some follow-up policies concerning the sexual predator allegations that were on Facebook regarding a golf coach. And we assured, I assured them that those were being followed and those were indeed in place. They just didn't know that we already had policies concerning allegations like those. We talked a little bit about the cyber attack, just general questions about, you know, sort of how we handled it compared to other school systems and whether it was a common thing. And kind of talked just a little bit about it. And then met, Mr. Weisner came and sort of talked about the same stuff here and the inclusion of LGBTQ students. And I assured him that all students are welcome at TCAP's public schools.
Any questions? All right, and then there has been some reshuffling of meetings. So, thanks to Beth, who's gonna stand in for me, and then there's a few other trading, but... who's going to stand in for me, and then there's a few other trading, but the next Board Office Hours is May 23rd, attended by trustee Pac, 6 to 7 o'clock, Horizon Books in the Upper Level. All right.
That one we haven't changed location on.
Moving on to consent, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I moved to, to approve the consent calendar as posted.
I'll second. All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those aye?
We're so close to aye.
Been traveling a little too much. All those opposed say nay. All right, motion carries. Moving on to school safe discussion, first item on the agenda, school safety update, refer to Dr. Van Wagner.
Yes, a few things for you. So Patrick McManus, our Director of Safety and Security, recently attended several training sessions throughout the state that focused on school safety and security. Some of the training topics were related to best practice pertaining to emergency operations plans, mental health and well-being of both students and staff, and district reunification. This information will be used to enhance procedures and methods already in place throughout TCAP's. And TCAP's is wrapping up its safety drills for the 2324 school year over the next couple of weeks. State law requires every school in the state of Michigan to run five fire drills, three lockdown drills, and two wind drills. Once complete, the drills are documented for the Office of Emergency Management and are also posted on the TCAP's website under the School Safety page, so wanted to give that update to you.
All right. Any questions? Then we'll move on to item B, the student proposed sustainability, sustainability resolution. We don't have any set talking points. I think I, in the executive committee, I said that I wanted to push this to the full board for discussion. I've heard a lot of good comments, and, yeah, I, I don't, I guess I'll, I'll wait to see if any board members have any comments first, and then we can kind of figure out how to do this, but, I mean, my generalized information that I was trying to take from everyone was, was a strong commitment to wanting to do more, and I think with the train and, and everything we're doing with the bond, that we've got a lot of focus on this, and we're just got to try and make sure that we bring the two together while at the same time being super excited about the fact that we have student and community engagement at the same time. So with that, who would like to, you're looking, you're looking like you're ready to go.
I'm ready to go. So I'm, I'm really appreciative of the fact that the students and community members brought forward this resolution. My concern is that the resolution is, is simply a pat of butter on the issue, and, and not a permanent resolution, so to speak. So I would love to suggest that we do something a little bigger than this, which is to start an environmental sustainability committee to discuss and go through all of our future projects and what we're doing with our building, what we're doing with our renovations, and talking about how it can be environmentally sustainable, whether that means electrification or something else that we don't, we haven't discussed yet, because we have had a number of students bring up other things as well. And I, and I love the conversation, and I think it's, I would like to include perhaps key members of the student environmental committees on that. I'd love to include some community members on that as well as relevant administration. So that's my suggestion, is that we make it a broader conversation where we can really dig deep on it.
Okay.
I would suggest, too, that we invite certain members of the utility companies to also be part of that discussion. I was recently at a meeting, and a utility CEO was there who is one of the apparently most committed to sustainability in producing power, and he was sitting right next to a man named Dan Scripps, who's the Michigan Public Service Commission head, and he told Mr. Scripps that there was no way we could make the goals that were currently indicated by the state, that technologically we could not do it. And Mr. Scripps said, "Well, if, if that's the case, we'll amend." So I guess the whole point is it's not a, we're still learning a lot, and there's a lot to be garnered, I think. We don't have a track record on some of it. So I think your idea of looking at it very carefully is important. The other thing that I think is important is adding something, perhaps something about conserving what we have, you know, a conservative approach to how we use electricity. You know, it's the thing where my dad always used to say, "Turn out the light when you leave the room." Some of it, I think, is practical, common sense that we could keep mindfully in our heads, and perhaps that, too, might be part of the discussion.
Okay. I, I would just like to commend the students, and I know Suzanne's been very active with this group, and just really commend the students in hearing your voices on this issue, let alone this resolution. I really applaud, applaud your efforts, and, you know, I mean, I, I, I really, I think the resolution, and again, going back to kind of what you guys are talking about, maybe creating a committee, but more looking into the words of the resolution, because my, when I read through, I, I, I'm reading things that are, you know, words like taking deliberate action. TCAP's has identified climate changes, so there's, you know, it's not specifically asking us to take specific action, so to speak, other than pass a resolution that leads us down that path, which I 100% agree with. You know, I, I just, one thing that just, you know, as we've gone through this whole bond process, because when we started the bond discussion over our facilities and what our buildings need, and, you know, it's just been such a bigger conversation, and putting the money pieces together as we've looked at all these different things that our buildings need, boilers and roofs, and, you know, it is hard when you start to compare, you know, a, a green way versus sort of what we've already gone through on some of our bond work. And I don't want that to be lost on the work that's already been done on kind of how we put our numbers together for, you know, our, our bond proposal. But I do like the language of, you know, again, taking deliberate action, you know, the, the, the one sentence just that we will address facilities and infrastructure needs in a way that drastically cut carbon emissions. You know, if that means taking out a mental health provider in a building, you know, versus, that's where I just really struggle looking at how we use our funds, and even Dr. Van Wagner and I today presented to a group of people, and, you know, 28% of our community did come back and say environmental focus, right, with our, and I hear that. I'm just, I'm kind of talking in circles, but I want to make sure that the, the work that's been done on the bond and the money that we've already sort of looked into allocating for those different things, you know, a lot of work was done there so that we could come to this amount that we're asking the community to support. I do love this idea, though, that we can take this resolution and use it in our discussions going down this path. I mean, I think, you know, I'm always one that if we're going to pass a resolution, it's got to be something that we believe in and that we're willing to pull through at, at levels that we can pull through. So, I don't know, sorry, I'm just talking in circles.
Oh, no.
Okay.
And this is part of the process with the meetings, is trying to put it together as well.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll echo without kind of being too repetitive, but I, again, I would just echo, you know, and appreciate the students' support, the faculty leadership from the environmental clubs. You know, I mean, I think that, in my opinion, when I read this, and especially the latest version of this, it's, it's, I mean, I think it kind of memorializes what we are already doing as a district. I mean, we're not going to, this isn't going to be an over the night, overnight, like flip of the switch. It's going to be a gradual shift as things that come up that are 20- and 30-year assets that are only coming up every 20 or 30 years, that we're doing a deep dive and a deep look into, you know, sustainability, efficiency, cost savings. You know, I mean, I think probably where we're at today, there's still, in my opinion, there's still a huge cost deterrent to some of these things. You know, that doesn't mean that we're not looking at them and that we're not making a decision that's best both environmentally and fiscally responsible for the district. You know, I mean, we have plans with Train for a lot of energy efficiency changes that are going to be cost beneficial to the district. We've already done a lot of things related to purchasing an electric vehicle, we've applied for electric buses. Again, those, still, I mean, the electric bus is 400-plus thousand versus a $120,000 diesel-efficient bus, so I mean, I think you've got to really just understand the impacts that go into all of that, you know, from a financial perspective as well, so. But I think, you know, when I read this, it, again, I think it memorializes a lot of what the team already does.
I think to, trying to add on to one of that, I mean, obviously, I'm a big proponent. I have a lot of solar panels and more going in at my facilities. I've, yeah, I've driven electric cars or hybrid cars for over 20 years, and one of the things that really, I would say shock, I don't want to make it sound like it's a bad thing, but when I started looking more with the facilities plan and the bond, I think all of us were a little shocked about how far we have to come on some basic stuff. And that's the one thing that I don't want to get lost in here, is we have, we do have a finite amount of money, and I would agree with some of the wording from the comments that we've had, that, you know, we should be looking at every item for the next 20 years because it's a 20-year item, but realistically, we have, you know, a pot of money, which is a large pot, I mean, it's, we're, we're going to spend tens of millions of dollars in efficiency upgrades, but we have to look at the fact that we, you know, some of our buildings, we've just stopped doing the LED lighting, like, we were so far behind that though there's low-hanging fruit that we've still got to address. So when we come to this, we've really got to balance, you know, do we make a boiler-electric versus upgrading an entire two buildings of, of lighting? So it, it, it is hard for me because I am very much on the sustainability side, and, but I, and I, but really what it came down to is I think this is an exciting conversation to have, so however we have that, I, I think it's what we are going anyway, especially with the train component. Part of that is, you know, with the bond that we are proposing, it's not directly related, but we are trying to free up tens of millions of dollars to invest in sustainability, and that will pay for itself as well as then make us more sustainable, well, more sustainable financially going forward as well. So I think we're largely on the same page, but I don't know if, if you have any comments on that.
Yeah, you know, one thing I'd mention is, you know, while everything you said's true, I think that, you know, if, if the bond were to pass and Central Grade being a complete tear-out, I think there's some real thought there. I think, you know, especially geothermal, you know, is in the mix now, and I think that that is a prime, you know, it's really hard when you're trying to retrofit and you only have three months of a summer where kids aren't in a building to have the time to do it. But I think the Central Grade project is one where we could really engage our kids, engage this, this committee in looking at, you know, that as well as what solar could we done that makes sense, you know, we could have Train come in and talk about, even if it was zero savings at that point, but if it's like zero cost, what could we do with solar panels? And again, I think looking at Central Grade, you know, if it were to be done, I think it's an open slate to be able to look at in that way, to kind of make as our first geothermal, possibly, you know, green building with solar, I, I think that's a start, and something the board could look at with new construction and those things in the future. I do know when Eastern was done, elementary, it was looked at, but it was so cost prohibitive, it wasn't there. And there are some federal incentives and some things out there right now, but, you know, for the retrofit, talking with Train, it's, it's not as well as if you're completely gutting out and starting new, you know, that, that's the time to do it. And so Central Grade is no doubt prime, I think, looking at that, and I think, you know, that could be a project that the committee could be right from the beginning of, of the, of the scratch, because there's no plans, there's no drawings for Central Grade. You know, we've got some parameters that the community has given us about honoring the history, but making it a 21st century building, honoring Lars Hockstead, as well as create some parking, but I think that's the one we could do to kind of start making that transition for the district. And then I, I think solar across the district is something in places. We do have panels right now at, I know, Westwoods, I believe, Central High School does as well, and we could look at some more where those opportunities, it's something we could ask Train, you know, to be able to do, but I do think Central Grade's prime for the conversation.
How did Montessori come out in comparison?
You know, again, at that point, you know, when, when that was designed, you didn't see some of the federal incentives that are out right now, and again, will those be there for sure when the time comes, you're two years down the road at this point, if not three, you know, from even a Central Grade start or, you know, from that element? So kind of depends on that, but, you know, if all holds true, like I said, it would, if a new Central Grade would be, if we went geothermal, the first one we have in the district, and, you know, it could set that pattern for in the future. If you're doing a complete tear-out of all the pipes, everything, again, that means a building, though, often is sitting, you know, you know, empty, and you're, maybe if you're just focusing on a building, you know, you can try and, and do that, but sometimes you have to push calendars and different things, but, like I said, I do believe the conversation is ripe for Central Grade if, if it were, in fact, if the bond were to pass.
And I think the conversation is good for all of it, really. I mean, we can talk the pros and cons. I think it's a great conversation, it's educational, and we know our kids are at the forefront, right, of that stuff, so, I mean, they're winning robotics championships, right?
Oh, yeah, and it's, it's changing so dramatically in this, this field that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I have a little experience in this, too, having sat down with oil company executives and having them tell me that solar was more efficient than gas and fossil fuels, in their own words. So I think it's a great conversation, so if we could, you know, I think we're not ready to pass this resolution the way it's worded, but perhaps the committee could work on something else as well, as well, and, and identify all of these different projects, maybe starting with Central, that we're talking about, and get the community partners involved.
That's why I wanted to make sure in the executive committee that there wasn't an expectation of passing today, because this conversation was super important, and, again, for the public, we can't talk about it unless we're in front of you, so.
And I agree with, you know, the inclusion, because some of those parameters, you know, the, the different utility companies are actually investing in electric, in solar as part of electric, so we can't, you know, as we're working with them, you find out what we actually need, and whether we need to actually go solar ourselves, or if it's all coming through them, right? So there's a whole bunch of that to consider.
Or to wait that something's coming.
Right.
Just wait a little bit, something's coming. I tore out geothermal when I bought my house 10 years ago, right? It was totally inefficient. It's changed enormously in 10 years.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to establish clean energy and sustainability. I don't know, I know I heard what Holly said, but I, I would like to.
Committee?
No, 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 to adopt the resolution that's presented to us.
Okay.
But I would need a second.
Yep. So is there a second? Hearing none, I guess that motion is not taken up. I think there's better wording for that, but.
I would move to establish the Environmental and Sustainability Committee and have the resolution on tap for revision and perhaps reconsideration.
I would second that.
Okay. And then I think we can vote on it and then get into the schematic, the technical details of it.
Is that just an ad hoc committee of this board?
So, yeah, so we're moving on, we have a motion and a second, and then we'll move on to discussion, so for functionality purposes, I think we would, it would be directed, the superintendent would come backwards with a proposal of, of structure, it was typically how we do it, and then the board would approve that at a later. I think you've, your motion's closed, I think it's got all the necessary elements, John, don't, don't you think that?
I probably would like to just know, how many board members are you thinking, two or three?
Okay, and I think we can do that verbally as part of the discussion, though, like, without a motion, without it being part of the motion.
Okay, and just look for some direction as well, as I start to put that together.
So I guess we can start with that. Any other questions on the actual technicality side?
Well, there's two board members that have not been part of this, so it'll be interesting to hear what they say.
I can see it's quite a, going to be quite a competitive, where it would be a formal meeting, so you could have whoever was needed, obviously, so, or wanted to do it, up to what the board was comfortable with, so that, I guess the questions probably, I wouldn't do, ever do four, because then you would have a majority of the board, but you can be two or three. I don't mind if it's three, I typically like to do smaller groups, but I'm okay with three in this case.
I know Flannoy has a large interest as well. I know Fl- Flannoy has a large interest as well.
Yeah, that part we have to deal with, uh, later.
Maybe we could just vote on the motion, if we have a second.
Yeah, I know, yeah, that's what I'm saying, to be overwhelmed, but I'm a, so I'm okay. Any other clarifications you want before vote?
So essentially, I'm, uh, putting the structure together for a committee for this next year, um, to be taking a look at it, um, as we go through. And, uh, um, we'll have two or three board members, I'll just get feedback, and, uh, we'll make sure we have our representatives of our communities, student bodies as well, that have the opportunity to be participants, um, because it is a subcommittee, the board is the board, but you will have invited guests, if you will, of students and committee members as well as companies as well. I think we'd want Train, our consultant from Train on there, as well as probably engaging TCLP, um, as well as Trailin Electric.
Yeah, which is-
My thoughts, as I sit here right now.
And relevant admin or staff.
And, and you added students, correct?
Correct.
All right, okay, any other questions before we get to the voting portion? I guess we, uh, Stacy, can we do a roll call vote?
Ms. Bird, or Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Newman Vale?
Yes, motion carries. All right, so that, I'm definitely happy, I know there's a lot to discuss, and I don't think, I think it's something we're all, uh, excited to see where it goes and having that, um, group together.
And thank you to the students for bringing that.
Yes, thanks, and, uh, we do really appreciate your patience. Uh, part of the problem with, uh, making sure we do everything correctly is it, it's sometimes slower than, than we ever want it to be, but we do care greatly about this issue, so.
And actually, those graduating seniors, um, if you could maybe help us identify some, maybe other students that will be here in the years to come, that would be great too, so, on your committee.
Awesome. Um, I may have to stall for a second here, uh, because we're moving on to the next agenda item. Um, and I'll just wait a minute. Could it just be a second, and we'll be back?
It's so hot in here. I thought I got too much sun in the track, I mean, oh, damn.
Then a last time, you've got to make it dramatic, crank up the heat.
Yeah, I know.
Find just what we're missing.
That's right.
I can, I can probably-
The teen pregnancy?
Yeah, I just, uh, oh, there you go. Um, so the, uh, next item on the agenda is the Teen Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Resolution. Filing it straight at you?
Yeah, okay, so, um, as you heard, uh, tonight's public comment, Generations Ahead is a great partner, um, that we have, uh, that works with teen parents, and, uh, they, um, wanted to put together a resolution to identify May as Teen Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Month. And so, uh, we have a great support and great partnership with them. And Margie, uh, is the director that we had the chance to hear from, also a former TCAP's board member. So we appreciate all the work her and her whole team do, um, for our, our teen parents in the district, but also, you know, the different, um, mentorship and the supplies and all those things that they give. And so, uh, um, they have asked for the board to consider adopting a resolution for, um, May as a Teen Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Month.
All right. Um, is there any, just, I mean, first of all, it's a fantastic organization. Um, had the pleasure of attending a, uh, a social to learn about it last year and was blown away about how much it gives, uh, to, to our students, so. Um, I don't have any questions and I am supportive, but if anyone has any questions?
Can someone read it into the record?
We usually do after we vote.
Okay.
I'd just like to say thanks to the three individuals for coming to speak this evening. Thank you.
All right. So I move, I move that the TCAP's Board of Education adopt, uh, the resolution, um, what should I call this, resolution regarding teen pregnancy prevention and awareness.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Second, second from Andrew. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
And Trustee Newman Vale?
Yes, motion carries. And then, uh, Erica, if you'd like to read the motion, or the resolution for the record?
Sure, uh, whereas the well-being and future success of our youth are paramount to the prosperity of our communities, and whereas teenage parents face unique challenges and responsibilities as they navigate the journey of parenthood while still adolescents, and whereas between two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two, there were a hundred and sixty-three births in our community, uh, that's Grand Travers, Lelandon and Benzy Counties to teenage parents, highlighting the urgent need for support and resources earmarked for this population. And whereas teenage parents are often unable to complete their education, only half of teen mothers receive a high school diploma by age, uh, twenty-two, and teen fathers have a twenty-five to thirty percent lower probability of graduating high school than teen males who are not fathers, which later results in unemployment, underemployment, and dependence on public assistance. And whereas teenage mothers often seek prenatal care late and therefore can su- suffer increased health risks, and their babies are often born premature and with low birth weights, and whereas it's imperative to promote awareness and education about the consequences of teen pregnancy, including its impact on the physical and mental health, educational attainment, and socioeconomic outcomes. And whereas empowering adolescents with the knowledge, skills, and resources to make informed decisions about their sexual health and relationships is essential in preventing unintended pregnancies, and whereas fostering supportive environments that encourage open communication between adolescents and trusted adults, including parents, guardians, educators, and the community, is crucial in addressing the root causes of teen pregnancy. And whereas supporting teen parents in our community is essential to ensuring the well-being and success of both the parents and their children, and whereas despite the challenges they may face, teen parents have the potential to thrive when provided with adequate support and opportunities. Now therefore be it resolved, Traverse City Area Public Schools of Grand Travers, Lelandon and Benzy Counties does hereby proclaim the month of May as Teen Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Month. We call upon parents, educational institutions, businesses, nonprofit organizations, healthcare and human service agencies, and governmental entities to join together, raising awareness, providing education, empowering teen parents, and implementing strategies to prevent teen pregnancy.
Thank you. So thanks again, we appreciate the work that, uh, goes into Generations Ahead as well, so.
And I want to say, as the parent, uh, as the adoptive parent of the child of a teen parent, I want to thank you so much for your work, because even the stuff that happened with her leading up to the birth and the support that she received was phenomenal. So, thank you so much, Mi Guetch.
All right, um, moving on to the next agenda item, recognition and appreciation for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four district retirees. Um, deferring any, is there any discussion, I guess, uh, on this? Do you have any?
Just again, want to thank all of our, uh, retirees in the years of service. They've committed to the children of TCAPs, and, uh, um, we always love that, uh, they get bored or have a little extra time, we always like to keep some in the bullpen, they come back and help, so to applaud them, if they have any interest in that, we're always, uh, interested in having some of our retirees come back and when they would like, and, uh, but again, stress how much we appreciate the dedication they've given to the children of our community.
Yeah, it's always shocking to see how many years, uh, a number, I mean, it's, it's a large number of years in that, in that group, so. Um, any other comments or, um, a resolute or motion?
So many familiar names on this list, so it's kind of heartbreaking, but I, they, they earned their retirement, that's for sure.
So normally we would name all their names off as well after the vote.
Yep. All right. Um, any other discussion or motion?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution of recognition and appreciation of the district's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four retirees.
A second.
All right, as seconds, uh, Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
And Trustee Newman Vale?
Yes, motion carries.
So I'll go ahead and read the resolution of recognition and appreciation, and then I'll, I'll read through the names. Uh, Traverse City Area Public Schools has been fortunate to have a dedicated staff committed to the mission of the district. Several members of that staff are now about to embark on new adventures in life away from Traverse City Area Public Schools. Members of the Traverse City Area Public Schools Board of Education wish to extend our utmost appreciation for the work that these staff members have done to make education an exciting and joyous experience for the students of our district. The Board of Education wishes to extend our sincere best wishes for every happiness in the future to those staff members who will be leaving the district at the end of the school or prior to the end of the school year twenty-three, twenty-four. Traverse City Area Public School Board of Education recognizes and appreciates the service of those employees departing the district and wishes them well in future endeavors, and fur- and further that this resolution of appreciation and support be duly recorded and spread across, spread across the minutes of the Traverse City Area Public Schools Board of Education on this thirteenth day of month of May in the year twenty twenty-four. Okay.
I, I struggle with just the one name and other agents and stuff.
Okay, so I'll read the name and then years of service with TCAPs. Uh, Kimberly Afton, fourteen and a half. Mary Carolyn Athanson, twenty-one years. Sarah Bajeras, twenty-six point five years. Arlette Bennington, nine years. Barbara Cotner, one and a half years. Peter Deneen, thirty-two years. Betty Dines, twenty-six years. Thanh Dykstra, twenty-nine years. Juliana Forlenza, twenty-four years. Keith Fortin, thirty-eight years. Patricia Hackett, twenty-nine years. Deborah Halachukas, twenty-five years. Peter Hanson, twenty-six years. Terri Hind, twenty-nine years. Jenny Hetfield, four and a half years. Barbara Hobson, thirty-one years. Joelle Colodey, thirty years. Barbara Kruger, thirteen years. Ben Ludka, twenty-six years. Sarah Merrick, twenty-six years. Ann McDonough, twenty-four years. Jody Myers, thirty years. John Moore, twenty-six years. Lance Morgan, twenty-one years. Kathy Nelson, sixteen years. Mary Beth O'Neil, thirty-five years. Doug Partlow, twenty-one years. Luann Ross, thirty-three and a half years. Beth Stepkey, twelve years. Jonathan Stewart, sixteen years. Melissa Thomas, twenty-nine years. Sue Thomas, twenty-six years. Suzanne Vanderclip, eight and a half years. Michael Van Pelt, twenty-four years. Heather Van Stratt, twenty-five years. Tracy Westerman, twenty-six years. And Edie Wheaton, thirty-six years, so.
And we will have a ceremony, uh, honoring our, our retirees, uh, pretty soon.
Yep.
Thank you to all, all of them.
Thanks.
Lot of, lot of experience there.
I know, it's crazy always to hear the names on the list, as you say. Um, okay, moving on to the next agenda item, uh, resolution in support of Northwest Education Services General Fund operating budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. Deferring to Dr. Van Wangeren.
So each year, we're required under law to provide input into the general fund budget of Northwest Education, formerly Traverse Bay Area Intermediate School District. Um, you might remember, really, mo- most of the services that were provided are for our special education and career and technical education students. However, we do have some, uh, uh, general education services, especially professional development, that's provided to our staff, and so, uh, we've had the chance to review that budget. Um, and again, uh, we see all of their budgets, they're very transparent with that. Um, a few years ago, on the special education budget, they, uh, put together a fund balance sharing, um, a, a process, uh, that really has helped all of our districts out within Northwest Education. So it's my recogna-, uh, it's my recommendation that the board adopt and, um, and give support to the budget for Northwest Education Services for next year and the general fund.
Okay. Any questions? Uh, if not, I, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education support the Northwest Education Services General Fund operating budget for the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year as presented.
A second.
A second, by all, uh, any other discussion? Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
And Trustee Newman Vale?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, moving on to the final discussion item, uh, Birth of Voss Property Update, I defer to Dr. Van Wangeren.
Okay, so I'll ask Scott Hardy, I believe is also with us. Um, I know he was at least at one point, I saw him.
Yeah, I think he went out to the hall, yes.
Okay, so we like to do this to people.
Maybe he'll be back, maybe not. Um, but, uh, the board was, uh, updated on, uh, the Birth of Voss property and that there, um, you will remember at our last board meeting that we did have an offer that you had just received. Um, and so that, uh, that is still on the table, um, that's sitting there. Um, and, uh, that is from a local resident within the neighborhood, um, that has proposed, uh, a purchase. Um, he had sent me an email, uh, update of, uh, six hundred and fifteen thousand that was there, but, um, we did receive just a new one, um, that you were notified by Scott on Saturday morning. So I'll go ahead and let Scott, if you want to come up, if you would, and, uh, let him give you the details on what's there and, um, looking for further direction. I, I told you I would give you an update this month, and so between Scott and I, we'll see what direction the board wishes to go.
We saw you try to sneak out.
Right. Did all of you see the email? Of the offers that we have in place, we were supposed to get an updated offer on the, from the individual organizations, right? A public information, so he has not sent an updated offer. I haven't seen it yet, he may have not signed it.
Let's, maybe sit down maybe at the end here, I don't know.
We'll wait for Larry.
The microphone's probably out of battery, there it is.
I know.
It's just on it. What, he's got batteries in his hand?
For some reason.
Wow, that's great.
I know, I know. We could just aim it up.
That's all right. All right, just to reiterate, uh, we, we did not get an updated offer from the individual who wanted to purchase the property, and his offer was for six hundred thousand dollars. He allegedly was going to, uh, make a revised offer for more money, and I haven't seen that yet. So, I will again follow up with him after the meeting tonight. You do have a formal offer, um, in your packet that I sent you, or at least the email that I sent you, from New Hope Church. Um, their primary use of the facility seems to be a daycare and a, um, well, potentially they would go on beyond daycare only to age three. Um, they recognize that, um, TCAPs has a formal program starting at age four. So they're only interested right now in serving their own community for New Hope. Um, they are talking about expanding it to other people in the Acme area that might need those daycare services. They also see great value in the gymnasium for their own parishioners and the ability to occasionally go over there and have activities there, whether it be basketball or volleyball or whatever for their, their folks. Um, there is still some detail to work out on that offer. Um, I, I got it Saturday morning, and so we have to, I think John and I probably ought to meet with them to talk in detail about what they intend to do and how soon they intend to do it. Uh, we are keenly aware, um, that we don't want to have a large impact on the neighborhood there, so I want to get some kind of a sense of what they think the frequency of use might be and the intensity of use might be. I, it doesn't appear, though, it would be extremely frequent, nor does it look like it'd be very intense, because they have their own facility just north of Acme for most of their basic service needs that they have. Um, I have been in conversation with Christ the King Church, and, um, theirs is a little bit more nebulous as to what they want to do. They understand the purchase price, so that's not been the issue. The issue at this point is that, um, The issue at this point is that the Father who coordinates activities at Christ the King has been out of the country and he's going out for another two weeks. So I need to get some clarification from them on how soon they might be able to provide something for us in detail. They have told me that they're going to prey on it and that it will happen in God's time. And I'm not trying to be facetious, but that's an exact quote from them. So I need to nail that down a little bit. We do have a fourth party, I guess, that I mentioned in there that is a commercial realtor from Traverse City who is looking to use the facility as potentially a private health club. I have asked him to go to Acme Township and to talk to them first before we get into any extended conversations. I did the same thing with both churches. I just don't, I don't want to get too far down the road if Acme Township is going to say that's not an appropriate use. So the two churches have already confirmed with Acme that that's what their intended use is and have been encouraged by the township to further pursue clarification of what they want to do. So my suggestion in my email was that you give Dr. Van Wagner and I another thirty days to get more specific answers. We have a May fifteenth deadline on the offer from New Hope Church, but I think I can get that extended a little bit so that we can at least get clarification from them. So that's where we stand.
Okay.
One additional thing I'll add is I do have scheduled a meeting with some neighbors as well, led by Mr. Bob Garvey on May thirty-first. Tried to get that earlier before this meeting. Kathleen Guy, who many of you know, who, former Vice President of, for the Endowment at NMC, also was one of the co-leaders of the Safer Schools Group. She's also one of the neighbors, also a part of this group to talk to that have asked... They formally went to Acme Township and Doug called me, asked me if I'd meet with them. So I tried to get it sooner, but this is the earliest that they can meet as well, just to again keep getting feedback. One of the things they think is important for me and I believe the board as well is to make sure that we do listen and hear all that. I think we've heard a lot, I think we do know somewhat where the neighbors, but I do think whatever, you know, direction the board wants to take, I think it's important to give some direction for me to sit with the neighbors and the township to talk about those onings and make sure we're not going down a road that there's a dead end on. I think it's important for that. And, you know, whatever we do in that element, want to make sure that everybody's very transparent on what the plans are and in those things. And you do have, you know, one offer that's been put in there again from Mr. Scribner that does talk about possible demolition of the building, you know, but there's some word of flesh out there. Again, he had a formal offer of six hundred thousand, did email me of a six hundred and fifteen thousand. And then you have the church that has submitted the eight hundred thousand dollar offer. But again, I think there's some questions about the building and what structures would stay and that's something that, again, we would always have to work with our legal counsel and that element on. But again, very, very much clarifying that and I'd want to definitely have conversation with the neighbors on, on those projects as well to be able to come back and give the board a formal recommendation.
Does Mr. Scribner know we have received the second offer?
He does.
He does, okay.
He doesn't know what, how much it was and he has not been interested in collaboration with any other partners to keep this a passive use in perpetuity. Because I do have some other people who, as Dr. Van Wagner has said, might be interested in contributing to that process, but he's not been willing to dialogue on that possibility.
And when you talk about going, you know, bringing it before the Acme Township, how is that conversation happening?
Well, for me, it would be formally talking with Doug and probably with some trustees. I do know that one trustee is also supposed to be a part of this conversation with Mr. Garvey, but I, you know, in that process, I think Scott and I worked together to try and field them out, again, the neighbors and see if we can get all of the entities to an agreement on, you know, that everybody's satisfied with the use. I do see the use at some point with any group of deed restrictions to make sure that what they say they would do is done, otherwise the property revert back to the district. So again, we would have to work with Trune or with Gordon Ben wearing at Trune. Already had some preliminary discussions with him about doing that and he is very well on board and understands has done that many times. But again, we just have to settle on who the, the person is we feel feels best meets the needs of the district, the neighbors and the township to see if we can come to a resolution on it.
I guess I did just want to add too, this has come to the board a couple of times with purchase agreements. And one thing for the community is we've never shied away from accepting public comments. In fact, we highly encourage it. So I don't want there to ever be a appearance of belief that we're not listening because we have taken every comment in and I am a resident of that area in Acme as well and I'm happy to hear what, what the community wants and that's what we're ultimately here to do, so. Yep. Anything else at all? Other than that, I guess we, do we want a formal motion to have you continue? We really don't at this point because it's status quo, but...
Well, if that's where you're going with it, I mean, do you want at any point, just wanted, are you saying that at this point you don't want to move on any offer?
I would like to give you at least the authority to enter into it so that, that way we don't have to have, you can, because you've got at least two that you need to have engagement to come to a purchase agreement.
You would like for me to work with Scott to negotiate between the current parties to see if I can come to a resolution that meets the, again, the needs of all three of those entities? So you're going to give me the authority to negotiate that and possibly bring a purchase agreement with Scott back to you at our next meeting?
Yep.
So I would need a motion for that.
Who's going to try and word that one?
I should say that the offer from Jason Scribner for six hundred thousand dollars has technically lapsed, so technically we don't have one. I think there's still a willingness to do something in that range, but that would have to be re-implemented as an offer because the deadlines in that have expired.
And that's why I think it'd be a little broader to have authority, that there could be a different, coming together of different groups within parts of these groups. So I think it's more of a general to enter into negotiations for a purchase agreement to bring back to the board. I don't know if you necessarily have to name any parties, to be honest.
Also, the two offers from the churches, aren't they for the same price?
No, the second church, Christ the King Church, is not formally offered. They've just formally entered discussions on a possible offer. That's awaiting a higher power at this point.
They probably both are.
So with Scott's comment, I think that, you know, at this point you can be the authority to negotiate with the two entities or any other entity that comes about between now and our next board meeting.
I move that Dr. Van Wagner and/or his designee negotiate the two offers and/or any other offers on behalf of the board.
I think that covers it. Second? All right, any other questions?
Would you corrected my motion?
Yeah, he did it.
It was perfect.
I'm going to make it better.
I only would have made it wordier.
I've actually learned that. If you don't know what, if you like pause because then we can continue and we don't have to redo the motion, so that was like, perfect.
I would prefer not to have a deadline on this so that, I mean, we'll bring it back anytime you want information. I'm happy to come back and do this, but I can't guarantee that we'd be here by your next board meeting, for instance.
Yep, I think it was worded to just be open-ended for you now.
Thank you.
I think just another piece of that discussion is just, you know, I, like you said, I would hate to go down the road of getting in front of Acme Township and then having them not support something that one of those entities wants to do. So as much due diligence as we can do on the, the front end, you know, because this has been, I mean, this is, we have been talking about this property for... A couple of years, yeah, a couple of years. So, you know, and I, I hear the community, I hear what the community is asking for and, you know, just want, and, you know, what the board need, you know, our needs are and so, so yeah, the sooner the better.
We did have a second.
One point of clarification just for our community, that does not give me the authority to accept it, only the board has the authority to make that action. I only have the ability to negotiate it and bring that back to the board to, for acceptance. The board is the only authority that has the right to do so.
That's right, you are your designee.
Can we actually get that in a roll call vote, please, Stacy?
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
And Trustee Newman Bell?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you, Scott, thank you. Thanks for all your hard work.
Moving on to public comment, is there any second public comment?
I didn't, oh.
So the board has set aside, it's time for public comment and individuals shall be limited to speaking once for three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system and we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint processor outlined in Board Policy 0167.3. Thanks.
Kathy Guy.
Kathleen Guy, Peaceville Valley Road in Acme, Williamsburg, mailing address. Is this on, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Bob Garvey is here also and we're really pleased to have the opportunity to meet with you, Dr. Van Wagner, at the end of the month. Sorry it couldn't have been sooner, but we are a family neighborhood. It's a quiet place, the people who live there have chosen to live there for that reason and an Uber development, as was previously a possibility, a strong possibility, was completely inconsistent with the neighborhood. And there were about eighty letters that I think went to the Township Board out of concern for what that could mean for the neighborhood. So we are really pleased to have the opportunity to share our ideas, our hopes, as well as our concerns directly with Dr. Van Wagner. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
I believe that is the end of public comment.
Thank you. Moving on to closing remarks, this is our last meeting in this, in this building. All future committee meetings and board meetings will be held at Glen, well, at least for now, will be held at Glen Loomis. The next Board of Education meeting is Monday, June tenth at six PM. I just wanted to thank everyone for attending and some great community engagement tonight. With that, do I have? Well, usually we stop and pause to sign students, but the great news is for students here today is we're going to actually beat the meeting time so you can just come up after the meeting and get any of us to sign your papers.
A lot of the end of the year needs, needs out there.
Any one of us can sign, in other words.
After we get through this last little bit, which is, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
First, second, third. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.